Good evening. Regular council meeting for the city of Copper's Cove held October 7th, 2025 is called by order at 7:43 PM. Please stand for the invocation by Mr. Haverlaw, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Pray with me as you will. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for your grace and mercy in all of our lives, Lord. Pray, Heavenly Father, over this governing body that you give them wisdom and knowledge on the decisions that they make for our community, for the betterment of our future. Pray also, Heavenly Father, that you watch over all of our residents, those who are serving our residents, and those in our state and federal positions that are also serving our country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the state flag, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Please be seated. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mayor Yancey.
Here.
Christina Strophas.
Here.
Rita Hogan.
Here.
Sean Alzona.
Here.
John Hale.
Here.
Del Tredway.
Here.
Vanya Hart.
Here.
Jack Smith.
Here.
All right. We go to item D announcements.
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to invite everybody to the 30th anniversary of the Cove House. They have their annual banquet banquet on November the 1st from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It is our biggest annual fundraiser, and we invite everyone to be there. You can get tickets or tables at covehouse.org.
Nothing in this time, Mr. Mayor.
Ryan?
Yes, sir. Just wanted to give a huge thanks to the Copper's Cove Police Department for organizing, coordinating the National Night Out kickoff party this past Saturday downtown. It was most, one of the most highly attended events we've had with a lot of great engagement and communication with our residents. So, very specific thank you to Lieutenant Baker on all the work that she did with that. This Saturday, beginning at 9:00 AM, Copper's Cove Fire Department will be having an open house at Central Fire Station. So, a lot of great activities and learning what the fire department does, how they provide services to our residents, and a lot of fun activities for kids. At 10:00 AM at Ogletree Gap is the Heritage Festival hosted by the Copper's Cove Historical Society. And then, next Saturday on the 18th of October at 10:00 AM, Keep Copper's Cove Beautiful is holding the Eco Harvest Event that will also be out at Ogletree Gap. And encourage all residents to go and learn about sustainability and recycling and reuse out there at that event. It'll be a lot of fun as well. Thank you.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
I have something. Excuse me. The Friends of Central Texas State Veterans Cemetery would like to present the wreath preparation, calling everyone to come out from the community for volunteering. For the wreath preparation Saturday, November 22nd at 10:00 AM, then the wreath laying ceremony on Saturday, November 29th at 10:00 AM. Wreath retrieval is at Saturday, January 10th at 10:00 AM. And for more information, you can go to www.reethesforvets.org. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
No announcements.
Okay. All right. We move to item E, Citizens Forum.
At this time, citizens will be allowed to speak for a length of time not to exceed five minutes per person on any item which is listed on the agenda and items not listed on the agenda. Thirty minutes total has been allotted for this section pursuant to Section 551.042 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Any deliberation or decision about the subject of inquiry which is not listed on the agenda shall be limited to a proposal to place a subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
All right. Is there anyone to speak during Citizens Forum?
My name is Dennis Hoddleston. I live at 2118 Urbanki Lane here in Cove. What I'm here to speak about is just recently, we had this severe hailstorm that came through our area. There was damage to my car. And when I got it back from the body shop, the bill totaled a little over $11,000 in repairs. And we also all know what the sun does to our paint job and our car interior, you know, fading it out and making it bad. So, I figured my answer was, let's erect a carport over my driveway to protect the car from the elements. Well, I called a handyman. He came out. He said, okay, I can put a, you have a two-car driveway. I can put a carport over it. Gave me a price, sounded reasonable. He went down to the building department. He was told the restriction was I was not allowed to have a carport. And even then, there were requirements where it had to be attached to the dwelling, could be longer than 10 feet long. My car is longer than 10 feet long, so it wouldn't do much to help keep the car in check. So, I was also told I could apply for variance to the ordinance. But I talked to one person online, and they said, yes, that's true. If you apply for variance, the cost could be up to $300. And if the variance is not allowed, the city keeps the $300, which to me seems a little unfair. If you apply for something, can't get it, you know, shouldn't have to pay the money. Also, along with that, if there were to be changed and car parts would be allowed, I would think there would have to be certain standards. That is, you know, the carport would have to either be a kit, like from Lowe's or Home Depot, that you put together, but a professional-style kit, or you would have a contractor come out and erect it and meet whatever standards the city would set. Not, you know, something you throw together with some tubos and some plexiglass or whatever. You know, we need to have a professional-looking, you know, situation. But I think having a carport, like in my case, my car is by no means a classic. However, my 2020 car is the last year of production for that make and model. So, it, you know, in the long run, I want to keep it as in good a shape as possible. And that, this to me is the simplest solution, putting under a carport where I can protect my car. Thank you very much.
All right. Is there anyone else to speak during Citizens Forum? Anyone else to speak during Citizens Forum? All right. We will move to item F, Consent Agenda.
All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item 1, consideration in action on approval of City Council workshop meeting minutes for September 16th, 2025. Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. Item 2, consideration in action on approval of City Council regular meeting minutes for September 16th, 2025. Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. Item 3, consideration in action on authorizing the City Manager to execute a professional services agreement with Utility Engineering Group, P L L C, for the design, bidding, and construction phase services for the Colleen Cove 20 transmission line replacement Phase 2 project. Scott Osborne, Assistant City Manager, Director of Public Works. Item 4, consideration in action authorizing the City Manager to execute acceptance of a utility easement agreement by Fieldstone Inc. to facilitate the development of a 4,950-square-foot retail building by Fahim Khan, located at 2332 FM 1113, Copper's Cove, Texas. Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director. Item 5, consideration in action authorizing the City Manager to execute acceptance of a utility easement agreement by Tractor Supply Company of Texas LP for the development of a 24,000-square-foot retail store located at 917 West Business 190, Copper's Cove, Texas. Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director. And item 6, consideration in action on granting Councilmember Vanya Hart an excused absence. Vanya Hart, Page 6.
All right, Council, is there any item you wish to pull and consider separately from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Recommend approve the consent agenda items F1 to F6.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Tredway, seconded by Mr. Hale. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move to item G, Public Hearings.
A governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on an agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item at the meeting before or during the body's consideration of the item. Item 1, the first of two public hearings to consider the Mashburn Drive Expansion Project Annexation requested by the Copper's Cove Economic Development Corporation and James W. Clark II and Wesley Atkinson, consisting of 112.38 acres of land situated in the Richard Hallmark Survey, Abstract 466, the William Haddam Survey, Abstract 454, and the C.G. Bennett Survey, Abstract 1680, and the James A. Wells Survey, Abstract 1065, and a portion of US Highway 190 located southwest of Oak Copper's Cove Road and Mashburn Drive in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Copper's Cove, Corial County, Texas. Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
All right. This is a public hearing. The time is 7:55. We will begin the public hearing.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor Sack.
Turned off. Okay. Mayor and Council, on June 3rd, 2025, the City Council authorized the City Manager to execute a development and annexation agreement between the city of Copper's Cove, the Economic Development Corporation, and James Clark and Wesley Atkins, otherwise known as the Mashburn Drive Expansion Project. On June 4th, 2025, the city provided a written notice of municipal annexation to Techston to annex a portion of the US Highway 190 that is contiguous and parallel to the city's boundary and to the Mashburn Drive Expansion Project. This is the first of two public hearings required by the Texas Local Government Code to receive comments regarding the annexation request. City Council is to open the public hearing and then receive public comments. Staff recommend City Council open the public hearing, receive any public comments. After closing the public hearing, no action is to be taken nor is deliberation necessary.
All right. Is there anyone to speak on this matter before City Council? One more time. Anyone to speak on this matter before City Council? All right. Then this, yes, come ahead.
Can you please come to the microphone and provide your comment?
What is it that they wanted to put there?
So, their proposal is to bring in industry. There's going to be a follow-up rezoning and FUP amendment application coming into the Planning Commission and onto City Council if this annexation is approved. And so, there's a portion wants this to be retail, commercial, a portion light industrial, and then heavy industrial.
Okay. So, retail.
Retail on the corner, yes.
Okay. Retail and industrial, no housing areas?
This one, this is not part of that.
All right. Thank you.
Ma'am, could you, for the record, go ahead and state your name and address?
Melody Ann Squires. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Okay. This is the first public hearing, so there's no action to be taken. There'll be one more public hearing, I assume, at the next meeting. Bobby, is that right?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. The time is 7:58. We'll close the public hearing. All right. We move to item H, Action Items.
Item 1, consideration in action on evaluating the services and reappointment of Municipal Court Judge FW Bill Price. Anita Eperson, Court Administrator.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, City Manager. This evening, talking reference to Copper's Cove-appointed Judge Price back on December the 15th, 1992, and he's actually been reappointed each year since as required by Texas Government Code, Chapter 29, Section 005. And also, the governing body also does an annual evaluation of the Municipal Court Judge as required by the City Charter, Section 5.03. Texas Government Code, Chapter 29, Section 005, states that the judge of the municipal court serves for a term of two years unless the municipality provides for a longer term pursuant to Article 11, Section 11 of the Texas Constitution. The municipal court judge who is not reappointed by the 91st day following the expiration of the term of office shall, absent of, absent by the appointment authority, continue to serve for another term of office beginning the date of the previous term's expiration. City Charter, Section 5.03, requires that the mayor and City Council to evaluate the municipal judge annually, and each council member and the mayor shall sign the evaluation as such an evaluation form is attached for the governing body. At this time, City staff recommends that the governing body evaluate the municipal court judge as required by Section 5.3 of the City Charter. Staff further recommends that the governing body take one of the following three actions on the appointment of the municipal court judge. One, reappoint FW Bill Price for another two-year term. Two, remove FW Bill Price as municipal court judge. Or three, take no action on reappointment of the municipal court judge in which FW Price, on the 91st day following October the 17th, 2025, will automatically serve for another term of office beginning on the date of the previous term's expiration.
All right. Mr. Price, would you like to say a few comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, City Manager, I want to express to you my gratitude for having been allowed to serve as the city judge for 33 years now. 32 years. Anyway, a long time, a long time. We try to run the court as a fair and just operation so that citizens feel like they've been justly treated when they live here or when they leave here, and that they know that there is a point at which there is room for mercy. The goal of, my goal as a judge is to try to bring people into compliance with the law. And for that reason, sometimes we take alternative routes that may not be obvious to other people. But that's the goal, is I want you legal. If you're driving without a license, I'm going to give you a chance to get a license. Okay? There are some other things that we can't be so merciful about, like insurance. We can't have a lot of room to play there. But we can find ways around a lot of things to attain the goal of justice and mercy in one operation. Thank you for letting me serve these many years, and I hope you'll let me serve a couple more.
All right. Council, you have any questions or comments for Judge Price? Okay. So, before you, there are three actions to be taken. As stated, reappoint Judge Price for another two-year term, remove Judge Price for, as municipal court judge, or take no action. What is the pleasure of the Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint FW Bill Price for another two-year term as municipal court judge.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Smith, I think, and seconded by Mr. Hale, or barely beat Mr. Strophas. All right. Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we amend the motion to also approve the evaluation form for Judge Price as well, which needs to be signed by the Council also?
I'll amend my motion to approve his evaluation and sign the form.
Still second.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor?
Yes.
With that action, we do have the evaluation form, and we'll be passing that down the dais. So, as we are continuing through the items, Councilmembers, if you'll please sign so that we can provide that to the City Secretary. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We move to item H2.
Consideration in action on Resolution Number 2025-23, nominating candidates for the Board of Directors for the Corial Central Appraisal District. Mitch Fast, RPA, Chief Appraiser for the Corial Central Appraisal District.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, and Mr. City Manager. My name is Mitch Fast. I work for the Corial Central Appraisal District. And I want to come here to provide any assistance that the City Council might require to make their decision on who they may want to nominate for the position of Board of Director. As you may know, that the local taxing jurisdictions are responsible for appointing five members of the county to provide leadership assistance as board members of the appraisal district. In 2023, the process changed for counties that were larger than 75,000 people, and that impacted Corial County. And what used to be a process, basically requiring five members to be appointed on every two-year basis, has changed to where there'll be five members appointed with staggered four-year terms. Up for election in 2025 are two members to serve a 2026 and 2027 term. A member can be any citizen of Corial County that has lived here for over two years and has no back taxes or delinquent taxes that they're aware of. Other than that, the local taxing jurisdictions are entitled to nominate anybody they see fit. Then, to put together a ballot of all the nominated candidates and provide the ballot to the local taxing jurisdictions, at which time they will vote on those members, and then declare the winner based on who gets the most votes. So, that's a process that's pretty similar to what you've done in the past. However, there are a few nuances that are different now. And if there's any questions on that process, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you tonight.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Fast?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Fred Chavez on the, to be on the ballot for the Corial Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Okay. So, we have one.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. So, this election is just for two directors, correct?
Correct.
And the whole county?
This election will appoint two members to serve four-year terms.
Yes.
I think I mentioned two-year terms earlier, and that was probably a mistake, but it would be a four-year term. There will be three members appointed in two years.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you. If I'm seeing this page here on, from the appraisal district, it says appointed members are. And then, there are two that come up this year, Ainaz Faison and Kevin George. Is that right?
Yes, sir. They served one-year terms, and they will not re-serve unless they're nominated and win the votes.
So, we could nominate two?
You can nominate up to two members, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification. Is there anybody? Is there any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Ainaz Faison.
Second.
Okay. So, we have two. And we can elect two or nominate two?
You can nominate two, yes, sir.
Okay. And do we need to vote?
I will send a ballot out with all the nominated candidates, and you can apply your votes to those candidates however you see fit at that time.
So, right now, you just need the two nominees?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, action needs to be taken to attach to resolution with the names of the nominees.
Okay. So, is there someone to approve the Resolution 2025-23 with the two nominated names? Mr. Smith?
Yes. Hold on. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to approve Resolution, make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-23 with the two nominees, Fred Chavez and Ainaz Faison.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Hart. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All right. Now, we move to item H3.
Consideration in action on Resolution Number 2025-25, nominating candidates for the Board of Directors for the Lampasas Central Appraisal District. Juan Salcedo, Chief Appraiser for the Lampasas Central Appraisal District.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Juan Salcedo. I'm the newly-appointed Chief Appraiser for Lampasas Cat. Very similar to Corial. Ours is a little different. We have five members coming up for election, and it's a two-year term. So, it'll be 26, 27 term. We tried to get on a staggered term, but we missed that. We missed that timeframe, but we're hoping to fix that in the next, in the next year or so. So, we're looking for, you can nominate anywhere between one to five, five members.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, do you have anything else? Anything else, sir?
No.
Okay. So, based on the 25 allocation of votes within the appraisal district, the city of Copper's Cove has 162 votes.
That's correct.
And it takes 834 to elect.
Yes. At this time, we're just looking for nominations.
Right. I got it.
Yeah.
Council? One to five nominees? Anybody? Mr. Smith?
I don't have a nominee.
Oh. Thought you were reaching to say something. Anybody? Was somebody going to say something? Okay. All right. No nominees?
I don't know anybody that wants it.
I'm sorry?
I didn't know anybody that wanted it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's, it's not a application process like we normally see for. We don't get to screen anybody or see anybody unless we know somebody.
Right.
Right? I don't know anybody.
And they have to live in that county.
Have to live in Lampasas County.
Which is the very far west side.
Ryan lives in Lampasas County. In the city of Copper's Cove, I might add. Can we nominate Ryan Haverlaw?
I can't be nominated as an employee of the governing body.
Okay. Well, that's out then.
Okay. So it appears that we're not going to nominate anybody.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we move to item H4.
Consideration and action on appointments through the Board of Adjustment to fill Place Three and Place Five, Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Lisa, Mayor and Council. In an effort to obtain qualified applicants, a vacancy announcement was released to the media and staff received two applications from Elizabeth Gaelic and Melanie Squires for appointment to the Board of Adjustment to fill vacancies in Places Three and Five. The Board of Adjustment appointments are on staggered terms. The Place Three and Place Five have an expiration date of September 19th, 2027. With that, staff recommend city council review the applications submitted for appointment to the Board of Adjustments to fill Places Three and Five.
All right, council, any questions for Bobby? Okay, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Elizabeth Margaret Gaelic for one of the positions.
You want it specific? Place Three or Five?
Uh, Place Three.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any nomination for Place Five?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll nominate Melody Squires for Place Five.
Second.
On the Board of Adjustments.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Hart. Okay, we have two nominees and two open places. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you both. And we move to item H5.
Consideration and action to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Inc. to produce a water and roadway impact fee study report, Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
Mayor and council, during the city council workshop held on March 19th, 2024, staff received direction from council to fund a professional engineering services for the creation and implementation of a development impact fees. Total cost at that time was estimated to be 240,000 to 260,000 for four components. I will say that estimate was four years old, and so it was old. On March 14th, 2025, the city sent a request for professional services to produce a water, wastewater, roadway, and drainage impact fee study. On April 10th, 2025, the city received three requests for qualification firms responding to that request. On June 11th, 2025, staff completed its evaluation of the submissions received to select the best qualified firm for the project. Staff determined that Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc. received the highest score for this project. During the initial discussions with Kim Lee Horn, estimated costs to deliver four components of the impact fee study report were $379,500. In follow-up discussions, it would determine that there was not enough volume of growth-oriented projects to justify implementing a wastewater and drainage impact fee study. On August 11th, 2025, Kim Lee Horn and Associates submitted its proposal to produce a water and roadway impact fee study report. The scope of services would provide the technical analysis required by Chapter 395 of the Texas Government Code to determine the maximum accessible impact fee that may be assessed. Kim Lee Horn will provide the city with assistance with presentations required during the public hearing and adoption process. City staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates to produce a water and roadway impact fee report. Will say the, the Kim Lee Horn schedule of services and compensations include reimbursement and fees totaling $259,500, and there are representatives from Kim Lee Horn in the audience to answer any questions the council may have.
All right. Thank you, Bobby. Any questions for Bobby? Any questions for representatives from Kim Lee Horn and Associates?
I have, I have a question. I think I have a couple of questions. I was just wondering how, I know that for two components, it's 259,500 for the water, water and the roadway. So I was wondering, okay, so if the four components was 379,500, how did we get to a number of 259? Because I'm thinking it would be maybe half of that if it's two components. Now, I understand all of them are different, every, everyone, yes, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Then by the Kim Lee Horn, the project manager on the job. So the drainage fees are significantly less, the study is less extensive than the roadway impact fees, and then it's dissimilar for water and wastewater, or I'm sorry, wastewater a little bit less extensive than that. And additionally, a lot of that is shared scope. So whether you're carrying two studies or four studies, you're still going to have to come back to council and have those discussions and have those meetings. A lot of those meeting times is the same whether we're talking about two projects or four projects. Somewhere, they all share land use assumptions, so how much growth are we going to see in the city? So if we do two studies or four studies, that scope is relatively similar.
Okay. I guess what I'm looking at too is because the price right now is 379,500, right, for the four components? So when I see these two components of 259,500, and I'm thinking of master plans and everything that needs to go, to go into it with the water, the wastewater, I believe, and the drainage?
Correct.
When you include that, maybe 18 months to two years from now, that number's going to go up.
That's correct. It's likely that number will go up in two years.
Yeah. So can you explain to me the water analysis and max impact fee of 650,000? What does that usually entail?
Sorry, will you say that again?
Um, the water analysis and max impact fee, I guess that's part of Phase One?
Uh huh.
And it's for 50,000, and then there's a tax for roadway analysis and max impact fee of 80,000. I was just wondering what that entailed.
Oh, okay, yeah, so that's developing the capital improvement plan for the individual studies. So we'll take a look at your currently adopted master plans and see which of those projects are going to be eligible to be in the roadway impact fee capital improvement plan. Developing a master plan of totaling all the dollars that will be spent on the impact fee capital improvement plans.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's that for me.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Council, is there action to be taken on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc. to produce a water and roadway impact fee study report.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Strophas, seconded by Ms. Hogan. Any other questions or comments? Good question, Ms. Hart. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, real call?
Christina Strophas?
Aye.
Rita Hogan?
Aye.
Sean Alzona?
Aye.
John Hale?
Aye.
Dale Chudway?
Aye.
Bonja Hart?
Nay.
Jack Smith?
Jack Smith stepped out during the vote.
Oh.
Nay. Did I miss the whole vote?
Okay, without counting Mr. Smith, I've got five to one. Motion passes.
All right. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move to item H6.
Consideration and action on authorizing the city manager or designee to jointly work with the Copper's Cove Economic Development Corporation and authorize a funding commitment for a feasibility study and creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone in Copper's Cove as an economic development tool. Ryan Havelaw, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and council, this item was previously discussed with you on May 20th of this year. At that discussion, city council asked, well, first confirmed that they had an interest in proceeding with the feasibility study and creation of a TERS, but requested that it be split into two phases. One phase being the feasibility study, the second phase being the creation of a TERS district with all of the necessary administrative steps. And on September 24th, after city council had previously, in August, allocated funding towards the study and creation, and the Economic Development Corporation awarded, not awarded, allocated funding towards the study and the creation of a TERS as well, the EDC approved the agreement with Calderon Economic Development Strategies, and city council has funded half of that cost. And so it would be staff's recommendation that you authorize me to work with the Economic Development Corporation and authorize the funding commitment that's included in the budget for half of that cost, which is $67,500.
Council, any questions for Mr. Havelaw? Okay, is there a motion to be made on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we authorize the city manager to jointly work with the Copper's Cove Economic Development Corporation and authorize a funding commitment in the amount of $67,500 for a feasibility study and the creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone in Copper's Cove.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Alzona, seconded by Mr. Hale. Discussion? All right, hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. That concludes all of the action items. There are no reports from outside entities, staff, or advisory committees, so we move to item J, items for future agendas.
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to look at the ordinance for the carports that Mr. Huddleson talked about, and we can take another look at that and see if we can amend it.
I need support.
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 All right. Anything else?
So that's all, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I have nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
None.
All right. There is no executive session tonight, so the time is 8:26. We stand adjourned.